In which case I call the meeting to order of the Silver City Planning and Zoning Commission for Tuesday, September the 2nd, 2025. If you would be so good as to rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And could we be so good as to have a roll call?
Commissioner Stone?
Present.
Commissioner Moody?
Present.
Commissioner Bayless?
Present.
Commissioner Middlestaff?
Present.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Present. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
I move...
A correction of the agenda. Go ahead.
I move to remove the minutes for the joint working meeting with the town of Silver City from the agenda.
We have a motion to remove the August 19th minutes from the joint meeting. Is there a second?
A second.
In order, do we need to approve the agenda first?
Well, this is part of the approval of the agenda. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, hearing none. The August 19th minutes are removed from the agenda. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. There are three remaining, July 1st, August 5th, and August 5th. There was a special and a regular meeting there. Has everyone had a chance to read those three sets of minutes?
Yes.
Are there any changes or recommendations, amendments? You have the option of approving each one, one at a time, or you can approve all of them. What is your preference?
I motion we approve all three: the regular meeting from July 1st, 2025, the special meeting from August 5th, 2025, and the regular meeting from August 5th, 2025.
We have a motion to approve three sets of minutes. Is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All three minutes, July 1st, special meeting August 5th, regular meeting August 5th, are thereby approved. Next item on the agenda is reports.
We have no report at this time. I just wanted to provide the public with a little bit of information. The joint work session minutes that were just removed from the agenda will be added onto the next regular meeting for approval.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is community input, and I don't see we're populated to large numbers of the public, and I would encourage the public to come to our meetings because we do listen. And a lot of the input on the code rewrite came from people coming to our meetings. With that, next item is public hearings, of which there are none; continued or unfinished business, of which there are none; new business. First item on the agenda is an action item, which is to approve a change to the land use code. If I could pass this around, and if I could pass this around, and I have a written copy for community development. I gave previous notice of a change last meeting, which I will now read.
Yeah.
I will be moving to amend the planning and zoning bylaws and rules of procedure previously adopted by inserting into Section 1.9 "Meeting and Hearing Schedules" a new section, D. D will read: "In January of each year, the commission shall identify from the commission itself, the community development department, or the town council, areas of concern, and shall select one or more such areas and develop solutions resulting in a text amendment to the land use code and zoning code for presentation to the town council for adoption." And the objective of that is to have continuous improvement, so each year, things that have become a problem, we can address, and therefore not wait 15 years. We can adapt far more quickly to what different community developments sees in applications, if there's some bugs that need fixing. So that was the purpose behind it. And since I'm allowed to make a motion, that is the motion that I would like to make. I'm wondering if perhaps we might have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or debate?
What if there's not an issue? What if we, like, is there some language needed to add in? Because it says shall select one or more. Is there, like, some wiggle word we should put in there?
That's a good one. There will always be stuff stacked up, because if you remember, we've got 140...
I'm an optimist!
Yes. We've got about 140 public comments that we have, that we haven't as yet addressed, so that would be the backup. But although it says shall select one or more areas and develop solutions, these can come from, among other things, the commission itself, and the commission has already got a book full of those items. So I'm somehow doubting that we'll run out of 140 of them in 2026, but your point is well taken. Open for dialogue.
I have a question about the other, another word, areas. Is that the proper term, areas of concern, or items, topics?
Issues.
What are the, how do you describe the items within the code itself? Each one is a section, I guess.
Individual sections exist in the code. However, comments don't always say which part of the code. Hence the idea of areas of concern, an area is more general than add something in more detail. So if community development finds that we've got several things going along with conditional use permits, but there's no specific item in the code that's addressed at that time, then we can say, well, let's review the required findings, or something like that. Similarly, we've got, as I say, well over 100 public comments, and they come in groups. And initially, we came up with 20 odd groups, and then we regrouped them, so we've got about eight or nine groups of things, and it's up to the commission to pick them. I have no concern whatsoever changing the word areas of concern to something more specific. A general area has got less ability to miss something out. The more specific you get, the more loopholes you create, but I have no qualms about changing any wording in this.
Your explanation is clear for me. I think areas is fine.
And...
Makes sense to me, reading it. I'm wondering, sometimes things get lost in the weeds. Is there a way to, I don't want to bog everybody down with lots and lots of little rules, but is there a way to say that it is required that this be, it's dereguer, it has to be on the agenda for every January, that there will be a stipulated agenda item that calls for scrutiny of any issues that have come up?
This...
Or is that saying it?
This is a cross-section, 1.9D. 1.9 itself deals with the January meeting, so we have several other things. One of them is, by statute, we're required to publish the schedule of meetings, the Open Meetings Act. And for a long time, that didn't happen, and the theory was, well, the town council does it. Well, the town council's meetings are on the 2nd and 4th Tuesday, we're on the 1st. And the reason that's significant technically is that when you publish the dates, then that's what creates regular meetings, and things that aren't published are special meetings. So that's why we have that in next year's handbook, which is almost ready for printing, which is almost the same as this year's, does have next year's resolution in it for where all the meetings will be. But it doesn't just do that in January. Section 1.9 has the election of officers, so the chair and the vice chair. So the general section is, these are mandatory, and under Robert's rules, you cannot postpone those items. If there's a meeting that's specified in the bylaws, such as it will be January, you can postpone it in January, at the January meeting. You can say, oops, sorry, let's make it February, but you can't do it the day before. You're required to follow the bylaws and have that meeting. So the whole of 1.9 is what happens in January. Are those good questions?
And the chairman will just know to do that?
He done well better!
Or the director will have a tickler file?
They done well better.
Or the planner will have a tickler file of things that have come up over the year and can pull that out? I mean, I'm just thinking of a way to make sure. Not everybody is as assiduous as you.
Well, you never know what's going to happen in January. In the event that I'm still on the commission, then for the beginning of the January meeting, I'm still the chair, so I will remember it. One of the reasons we do the role plays that we've been doing is so that everyone has get a chance at being the presiding officer. And you're right, we haven't role played in January. I think we might do that. It's time we had another good role play, and I've got some more tricks up my sleeve. I might have to make them interesting. I'm very pleased with how they went, and I think everyone enjoyed the role plays.
Okay, so it seems like we've talked this through.
We have a motion and a second. Is there no further discussion? In which case, if we, this is a bylaw, so if we could do a roll call?
Commissioner Stone?
Aye.
Commissioner Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Bayless?
Aye.
Commissioner Middlestaff?
Aye.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Aye. The ayes have it, the motion passed, so the effect will be that the bylaws will have that extradition in it. I will print it up and send it to the town clerk, because he keeps the bylaws on the website. Thank you very much. There being no other new business, next item on the agenda is reports from staff.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Commission. So one thing I would like to note for you all and the public that is watching, we have several open positions at the town of Silver City, including children's and young adult librarian, police officer, a recreation coordinator specifying in special events and programs, sites director for kids-based school-age program at the New Rec Center, a sewer crew member, streets equipment operator, town attorney, and community development director. So we recently posted for the community development director position. I will ensure that throughout the land use code update process, I will still be involved, but after we hire a new director, unfortunately, I will not be attending these meetings anymore, unless you so wish. So I just wanted to get that on your radar, and thank you so much for all of your knowledge and input throughout these times that we spent together. I know it's various times for everybody, but I definitely appreciate your guys' volunteerism and willingness to be on the commission and all that you've brought to the commission.
You sound like you're already gone.
No, I'm still here, but I'm just, you know, time is moving fast, and I just want to make sure that you all know that you're very much appreciated. Thank you.
So you're a short timer?
As community development director, yeah.
Do we have any hearings coming up for October?
No, we do not.
No other reports from staff?
We may have, actually, another hearing on the October meeting, depending if some timelines run in place. It would be the town of Silver City as the applicant.
Thank you. And I meant to mention this at the beginning of the meeting, that we have Emily here, and again, welcome, and you're probably going to get dropped on it a lot more, dropped in on it a lot more with the director attending to other capacities in the town. And thank you for everything you've done. I know the meetings are tough, especially the minutes, and I very much appreciate. You seem to have a learning curve that is similar to Jackie O'Leary's learning curve. And I would also say that the community development department is excellent at customer service, and that's exactly what we're all here for. Thank you very much. Next item on the list is reports from commission. Commissioner Stone, have you any reports or comments?
I do not.
Commissioner Moody, have you any reports or comments?
I do not.
What?
We could have an early meeting there. Commissioner Bayless, have you any reports or comments?
I keep coming back to the salute to the next New Mexico state flag. Is there a plan in the works? Okay, all right, because I don't know what it is!
Somebody's got to memorize it.
Yes, I've been trying to do that. I do have it here, so it's ready to go, and it's an opening ceremony, so it doesn't actually have to be in the bylaws, nor does the pledge, but it's in there, and we can do it because it's an opening ceremony. And we're not allowed to make any decisions, but I haven't heard any opposition to it, so I might just try it at one of these meetings, see how it goes.
We can have it at the annual dinner meeting.
I wish, I take it you're going to be catering?
Yes, and we're going to have bangers and mash?
Good.
Bubbles and squeak?
Yes.
Is that something you people eat?
Yep.
And then there's something called rumbly thump?
There's a lot of things in this one dessert that I'm very glad you didn't option, because it has a completely different meaning in the United States.
Okey dokey!
Okay, well, thank you very much for that input, Commissioner, but anything else?
That's all we have.
I notice you did say yes when I asked if you were going to be catering.
Well, we have to get our rule Britannia cookbook out.
There you go. Commissioner Middlestaff?
Yeah, I have a question that's come up based on all these things that are happening: illnesses, vacancies, and turnover, and elections. If we don't have a quorum, is there a procedure in place for the public to receive the service they need? Like, does this revert back to the council? Because this is a task given to us by the council to do in their stead, and I was concerned that perhaps we need to codify something, or have at least institutional knowledge that if we, you know, how hard it was to fill these positions, and if we run into a crisis, how do we provide this important service to the town? So that's what I wanted to know, and we might not know the answer.
Well, everyone thinks that there are five privileged motions, which I can enumerate if you really want.
No.
There aren't. There's actually a sixth motion. It's called "Take Measures to Obtain a Quorum," and there are certain things you can do when you don't have a quorum, one of which is you can twiddle your fingers and make phone calls and things like that, but you can also set a date. So in the event that somebody didn't show up, and that was the cause of a loss of a quorum, then you can set the date, for instance, the next day or the day after. The Open Meetings Act, in other words, postpone. And the Open Meetings Act has a special provision, if it's within roughly two days, that you don't have to go through a full 15-day noticing performance. You have to post a notice on doors to the meeting room, and then you go ahead and do it. If it's because of a shortage of members, then that's going to be something else again. So far, we've always had the members, it's that they haven't always been entirely prompt or remember the day in question, but that is the procedure. And the rule even lists the priority of motions, fixed time to which to adjourn, "take measures to obtain," and recess. Those are the four motions you can fully legitimately make. And it is the job of the presiding officer or chair to know these rules, and I will gladly help anyone if they want to learn more about it.
So that didn't get to my...
Chairman?
Yes?
Chairman, Commissioner Middlestaff? We can look into the code and see if there's any process delineated within there, if there happens to be an issue with a quorum, if it would be sent up to council. I believe since this is kind of a designated body sort of process, I don't think it would be reverted back to the administration of the town to be able to make that decision, but again, we can look into the code and see if there's anything in there that explicitly states if there's a lack of quorum or, you know, dissolved.
My anxiety is, you know, it's a collective anxiety built up over the last couple of years of mistreatment of our applicants, and, you know, the difficulty we've had recruiting, and I'm very grateful you all are here, so, but it just occurred to me one day, I was like, what happens if the whole ball of wax blows up and we don't have this service for our citizens? How do we provide a timely variance or zone change or what have you, if we can't get people recruited onto the commission? So that is, I think, worth exploring.
It's certainly true that we've had people who submitted applications, and I've spoken with them, and they did not like what has happened in appointment meetings.
I was mistreated, I would argue, in my first...
We also had a case last year, an additional one. What I would say, because I know people do watch us on TV, if you're interested in planning and zoning, keep an eye on us, because we actually have fun in our meetings. Quite often, because I screw up, and we all get a good laugh, but everyone works very well together, and the only requirement literally is, can you read and listen to facts and fit those facts into some findings that we have to have? And the answer is yes or no. It's very simple, and it's apolitical. There's no political interference with the decisions in a public hearing like that. And I do encourage you to get involved, and we're not a commission that sort of meets once every few months if a hearing comes along. We're going to have short meetings like this, because when we don't have something to do, we'll still meet and make sure everyone's on the same page, but with a long list of things we're going to have to address for code rewrites, I think we'll always have something to do. But please, if you see a vacancy, please get involved. Now, I've also got a couple of suggestions to help, one of which is a legal issue that our town attorney would have to look into. The statute, the only statute that addresses membership of planning and zoning is actually the Planning and Plating Statute, and it doesn't mention it in the text, it mentions it in an annotation, and that is, the annotation is a 1959 Attorney General opinion. There are two towns in New Mexico that I've found who do allow membership outside of the boundaries of the town. One of them restricts it to the ETJ, the three-mile perimeter, and one of them doesn't, but they have criterion to make sure that the county could never have a majority. So that's one thing. There's another thing that I want to explore, and again, we would need to talk to the town attorney about it. Paragraph 9 of Section 6.1.1 of the Land Use and Zoning Code has provision, and this is thinking aloud, it may get shot down. Paragraph 9 allows the council to appoint a non-voting person who will be an advisor to the town council, and a correction to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'm wondering if that might not be an opportunity for someone to be a reserve, so that when there is a vacancy, they go in, and then we get another one on Article 9. So that would help with the quorum. I have not spoken to the town attorney yet. I think it's got merit, and I think we should address it, and that might go a long way to help. I will say that ever since the episode last year, the council has been less adversarial with our applicants. I've always asked new candidates to contact the councilors by mail, text, and phone, and the mayor. Interestingly enough, it seems that three of the councilors have been very good at returning those phone calls, one perhaps less so, and I asked the applicants to do it again, make sure that all the bases are covered. Does that answer, help to us?
Yeah, so I guess my question is, should we be pushing this issue? I know we have a lot on the agenda with addressing the land use code in the next month, so I don't mean to bring it up, but should this be something that comes from us in January, pushing it to the council, or would it be something we would go through and ask the council to do for us?
A good question. Before the previous town attorney retired, I had given him a couple of issues to look at, and maybe the time has come to, for me to give them to our assistant town manager to see if Mr. Charles Credit could look at it, which brings up another issue, since we're in reports. Do you have any more on your reports?
No, I don't.
In which case, thank you, I appreciate those. I spoke to quite a lot of people over the weekend, and there are issues with loitering. In the past, whenever I've raised it, going back to when I was on the council, the answer is it's a freedom of speech issue. And in looking at this, Denning in particular has a loitering ordinance, which would cover the complaints that I received over the weekend in listening to people. I walk up and down Bullock. Just because they have it in their code does not mean that they use it, and so I would give a copy to the assistant town manager to look at and see, is that something that the town would be interested in, in which case we can make that a recommendation, obviously, draft it up so that it fits in with our existing code. It's something to think about. And the other one is membership, having one person eligible from the county, and the other one is using Paragraph 9 of 6.1.1 to have a non-voting person who isn't a commissioner but is ready to become the second there's a vacancy, then we get someone else. But we want that person not to just sit there and do nothing. We want to be able to use their knowledge, skills, and abilities. So that's what I've been trying to pursue, and if there's no pushback, then I will pursue it even harder. And I'm very pleased with what Jackie O'Leary, our assistant town manager, has been very helpful in some of these matters. Any further comments from staff? Any further comments from commissioners, apart from will I shut up? Okay, great. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I second.
We have a...
I second.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no objection, we will adjourn. We are adjourned.